Meeting was called on January 30th, today's February 1st. There'll be committee of the whole meeting from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Via Zoom, the purpose of the meeting is to identify the key indicators on the Mass DSE Superintendent Evaluation Rubric. That will be the basis for the superintendent's evaluation at the end of the school year. The school committee and superintendent will also discuss guidelines for the types of artifacts the superintendent will present to the committee at the formative assessment and summative summative evaluation meetings and how those artifacts will be presented to the committee. Also appoint a designated school community member to calculate the ratings and the key indicators of the DSE approved evaluation tool and compile all the school committee feedback and notes to complete the final evaluation for submission to Mass DSE. Meeting will be viewed through Medford Community Media on Comcast Channel 15 and Verizon 45 at 6:30 PM. You could also call in by dialing 1-312-626-6799, enter meeting ID 99207780433 when prompted. Additionally, question or comments can be submitted during the meeting by emailing medfordsc@medford.k12 MA.us. Those submitting must include the following information, your first and last name, your Methodist Street address, your question or comment. Roll call please, Member Russo?
One second. Member Graham?
Here.
Member Hayes?
Here.
Member Crats?
Here.
Member McLaughlin?
Here.
Member Mustown?
Here.
Member Russo, present, Mayor Logocurn?
Present, seven present, zero absent. So we can go right into it. I know we wanted to talk about indicators, how to compile the ratings and guidelines, so I'll open up to the floor.
Mayor?
Yes, Member McLaughlin?
I was just gonna suggest if we could just open the document, thank you Sharon for pointing out the Appendix C in the 44 page document to start with, so I don't know if someone wants to share the screen or what other folks think.
That sounds great.
Do you want me to share the screen?
Oh.
If somebody else wanna do it, yeah, I think I have it. If someone else wants to take the liberty, if they have it up right now, they can, because I have about a million tabs open on my page. Hold on, I think I have it, so I'm sharing the screen, yeah, here it is, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
You could make it larger if you wanted to.
Okay. Let me just try to make it bigger. I'm gonna actually just fix it in a second, is that bigger for you guys? Okay. Just move the grid over. Okay, so this is the Appendix C. Which is in the appendices of the whole document, so page 30. If other folks have the document and they wanna look on their own, I guess.
Member there? And a member Graham? So I just wanna make sure I understand what we're doing, we are identifying the one or two focus indicators per section as a first step through like our agenda, is that what we should be thinking about, thinking through right now?
I think that's the first part of this, we also need to decide if we're gonna use numbers or the Dorothy's suggested unsatisfactory needs improvement proficient exemplary and then figure out if we wanna committee or one person to do the ratings and take the notes, so I agree, let's start with the indicators.
If I can jump in, so the training that we had with Dorothy Presser about the superintendent evaluation, there were a few things that came up that we just needed to, I guess, update our process in terms of to match the, there's a, I think this is, does it say 2019? I don't know if it's a change or not, since I wasn't doing it before this, but there's some guidelines in terms of the indicators under each standard, so there's what, five standards? And based on that training, what we were told is that, maybe there's just four standards, that for that overall, there should be six to eight, we should choose six to eight indicators for, to focus the evaluation on, that there has to be one from each standard, so we have to choose at least one focus indicator from each standard. But beyond that, you know, it, and it should match, we should choose the ones that seem to most closely align with the superintendent's goals.
And Yep. Dr. Edward Vincent?
Yes, I just was gonna say the version that I emailed to the committee is November 2022. So that, that, there was a 2019 and then DSE updated it and so I'm not sure if that's the same page, Member McLaughlin is on right now, but the
Let me look at my email and get that one.
I, I tried to print the document that you sent superintendent and it's a mess of a document, like it doesn't, I, I don't know what happened when they convert, when DSE converted it to a PDF, but like the words roll off the page, like I
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's sort of a disaster, so I actually was like wanting to read through that, but I, it just is like sort of impossible to use the way that it was delivered, so.
Definitely.
I don't think there's anything you can do about it, that's, I'm sure that's what's on the DSE website, but.
That's why, yeah, so I, obviously, the one I have was out of date, I looked it up, I Googled it just because I found the same thing that Jenny said, I couldn't, there were missing pieces, like it, it just, you couldn't actually really read all of it. So I was trying to find some, a cleaner copy, but I guess I got a wrong, a not completely updated one.
If I, I'm looking at the document you guys are talking about and I do see, Mayor, may I, sorry?
Absolutely.
I do see what Member Graham is mentioning on the first couple of pages, but in the, in the rubric for the superintendent evaluate, I think for the section, the appendices, maybe Jenny, am I wrong? That the rubric looks okay, it does look like in the, in the text field, the stuff didn't look okay, but let me just scroll down and see.
I mean, I'm just looking at yet another document, because you know, we like to have lots of documents in these things and like this is one, I'm on the DSE website and it's just a document about the standards and the standards are exactly the same
Yeah.
as the ones in Sharon's document, so even though there is a discrepancy in the date, like the, the standards themselves are exactly the same. They're the same number, they're the same title. It doesn't look like anything has changed, so I think wherever you look, you the, the choices in each bucket are the same, so that's, I guess, good. So does somebody have the document accessible where we can zoom in and kind of go category by category, get Dr. Edward Vincent's input and committees input so that we can pick these indicators?
Yeah, I do Mayor, that's what we have to open it first.
Okay, so it's a little hard to see.
Yeah, I'm gonna zoom in in a second, I just gotta get, I had to, because I closed it and opened it to look at the other document, so give me a minute, so this is Appendix C and then let me zoom in. Whoops, that's really large, can you guys see that?
That's great, that's great.
Okay, good, because it's really large for me. And may I Mayor?
Absolutely.
And in reading this, I, I also thought maybe this, this is, if others understand differently, please share, I also thought that the superintendent was gonna pick one set of goals under each of the goal piece or not, I mean, are we starting with step two to look at the four
Yeah.
standards and then go back to step one?
Well, we already did step one when we approved her goals, like at the beginning of the year, so those are steps.
Okay, but they're not gonna be related to the, the, the standards if, unless we have them up as well, or the, you know, we wanna identify those, so that, so in other words, what Dorothy was saying is that the goals that we approved by the superintendent, as you know, earlier in the year, the standards that we're evaluating her on need to be obviously related to those, and I think, you know, I don't know if people wanna bring those up or for, especially for people that are gonna view this, that they know what those are, so that we're referring to them, or I don't know, how do you guys wanna do that?
I have a printout of what those were that Maurice sent us, so we have a, like three pages, right, the district improvement goal, an early literacy goal for student learning and then professional practice goal.
Right.
So I, like before the meeting, I went through and looked at what those were and then looked at the indicator possibilities and I made some notes about what I think sort of aligns the two. They need to be aligned, right, so I, like for example, like in instructional leadership, the two that stood out to me as like the most aligned, so Melanie, if you scroll down a little bit to that next section?
Yep. Hit this section?
Uh, no, a little bit further down.
Page four.
Yeah, page four, okay.
Page five, sorry.
I think just at the bottom of this page, I think, right there. So in that left column there, under instructional leadership?
Yeah.
The two that stood out to me as like the most aligned to the overall goals were
I just, just, if you go down one more page, if you go down one more page, it actually gives the description of each of those rather than just the titles, so it gives, yeah.
So Mayor?
Sorry Jenny, I interrupted you.
Thank you, I just, this is super helpful, thank you to Member Graham for sort of going through and, you know, doing this in advance, I just wanna make sure that again, for folks who are watching or wanna watch later on, that they're understanding the process too, so I don't know if somebody wants to do just sort of a, a brief description or introduction or what, I don't know if the, if the vice chair wants to do that, or if somebody does, but it might just be useful for folks that are watching so that they understand what we're doing and what this process is and what, you know, the attachment for the standards to the goals are and why. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. Member Graham? Okay, so I think for everyone who's watching, for context, right, the school committee is responsive, one of our chief responsibilities is to hire and evaluate the superintendent, so that the valuation process is quite prescriptive, that comes from DSE, so we can, you know, I think on some level, we could do anything we wanted, but ultimately it has to fit into a particular structure in order for us to be able to submit our, our annual evaluation to DSE on behalf of the superintendent. And so as we've done all the years that I've been on, the superintendent presented earlier this year a set of goals that covers three categories, one is a district improvement goal, one is a student learning goal and one is a professional practice goal, and so earlier this year, like maybe end of September, Dr. Edward Vincent presented to us a document that lists those goals and like what the key actions are related to the goals and what the outcomes would, might look like. If she has achieved those goals and we approved that unanimously either at the end of September or at the beginning of October. We subsequently had a retreat with somebody from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to connect that to this like very long set of indicators that DSE asks us to weigh in on, so they are in addition to the goals that we have already approved and the change for us in terms of how we are doing this to align with the newest latest version of what DSE is asking us to do is to instead of evaluating the superintendent on each and every one of these rubrics, we are being asked to evaluate, to identify a subset of all of these indicators across four categories that are the ones we want to see focused on this year and the ideal is that they align with what the goals are that we've already approved, so this meeting is really to say, we did not do that piece of work when we approved the goals initially, because we hadn't yet like connected those two things the way that DSE is connecting them right now. And so we need to go through and of this, on the top of the screen there, you can see those four columns. It's our collective job to reach consensus on which of the one or two indicators in each column do we believe are the ones that we will focus on and evaluate the superintendent on? All of those things obviously are things the superintendent's generally expected to do in any given year, but from an evaluation perspective, the goal is to make sure that we are evaluating the superintendent in a, a way that is focused on what the district's goals are and that's sort of reflected in the superintendent's goal. So the first thing that we need to do is go through these indicators and determine in each column, there has to be at least one, but the recommendation is that there are no more than two. Which ones we are going to evaluate based on when we do her review later this year, so I think fast forward to next year, we would do all of this at the time that we go ahead and identify what the goals are for the year, so this step, this interim step that we're taking next year will be done sort of all at once, we just hadn't, as a committee, as a collective, gone through this together with, to sort of link up the changes that DSE has made in the year or two with what our process has been over these last few years, so the first thing, you know, first thing on your agenda is to decide which of these things most closely aligned with what the goals are that we've already approved, so we're not opening up the floor to rehash goals, but instead to say which of these things match those goals that we've already asked the superintendent to work on and it is halfway through the year, so she's already working on those things. Great, that's perfect, thank you Jenny, so first up, we have instructional leadership, A is curriculum, B is instruction, C is assessment, D is evaluation, E data-driven decision-making and F student learning. So if anybody has any thought on which of these indicators you'd like to choose for the, this coming evaluation, speak now, please.
I don't think I'm able to raise my hand because I'm screen sharing, so I just wanted to say that, I, I'm happy. Thank you. I was thinking instruction and/or data-informed decision-making based on, you know, the instructional leadership skills that Dr. Edward Vincent has and has, you know, talked about in terms of the goals as well for the instructional leadership, but that's sort of where I'm weighing in, I also just wanted to say, again, through the chair, I thought that was an excellent explanation for laypeople and appreciated. And also that it's really important that this is done and that this is done, you know, in the future at the beginning of the year so that the superintendent knows exactly, you know, what the evaluation is going to be at the end of the year and what it's gonna be on, so it's very clear for everybody, is any employee essentially would wanna know what they're being evaluated on very clearly, so I think you know, this is great and this is a huge help and tool, but I, I would say instruction and I know they say one or two at most from each and not in a maximum of not more than six, but those are the two I'm leaning towards and would love to hear what my colleagues think.
Okay, so, and so B and E?
If I can, I, I have the same. Also, just to be clear, it's six to eight, so we can, it could be, we have to have one from each and then we could have two in some, we could have three in some, depending on what seems to be most aligned to Dr. Edward Vincent's goals and to kind of what we think is most important focus, I think, for the year two, together with the superintendent. I had actually the exact same thing, instruction and data-informed decision-making based on looking at the early literacy student learning goal that did focus both on looking at our literacy instruction, but also using the, the MAP scores really to focus on that data-informed instruction.
Sounds good.
I had the same. Thank you.
I had, I had just chosen one, but I had chosen data-informed decision-making, but the instruction makes perfect sense.
So is there motion on the floor to, for instructional leadership that we take categories, instruction and data-informed decision-making?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Member McLaughlin, seconded by
Second.
Member Hayes, all those in favor? I. Roll call. Roll call.
Just writing things down, one second.
Did we wanna, I'm sorry, did, did we wanna talk to the, did the superintendent wanna weigh in on it too, or is this something, I don't really, I'm not really sure, is this something that we just choose, or?
Yes, we'll take any input from Dr. Edward Vincent anytime she wants to chime in.
Just wanted to make sure she
I'm just, I always see in three people each on the side, so if I don't see you raising your hand, anybody, please just.
I, I just was gonna comment that I felt both of those indicators are aligned with the work that's taking place, the work that we're doing, so I, I do I, I do feel that that's, that's there and, you know, we'll probably be, be able to provide additional data, some assessment data for our early literacy assessments, but you know, we're doing that, so indicators B and E, you know, I'm in agreement with those two indicators.
And there, I just wanted to show the B and E more sort of broken out as Member Hayes was mentioning.
Great, thank you. Okay, Member Russo, roll call please.
Yes, Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Mustown?
Member Mustown? I don't know if she's still on, let me check.
We'll come back, Member Russo, yes, Mayor Logocurn?
Yes. Member Mustown?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, seven of the affirmative, zero on the negative, indicators for instructional leadership have been chosen, next up is management and operations, we have environment, HR management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, policies, fiscal systems. A and B, yep, A and B seem to stick out at me, Member Graham? I actually only had A selected here, like when I read through B, I felt like it was trying to get at something that arguably like we need to get to as a district, but didn't totally line up with the specific details of what we're asking the superintendent to focus on this year, so that, I totally agree on A. And I think that's really important, given like the, the focus, you know, actually the alignment of the goals that we have and some of the immediate focus that we have, particularly at the high school. But the, B didn't totally line up for me exactly the way A did, so, but I, I could be swayed either way. Okay, so two votes for A, one vote for B, would anybody like to add anything further?
I, I had A also.
I had A and I also had, because I felt like we do the budget, I had fiscal systems, develops a budget that supports the district's vision, but I don't know if that's gonna come in another section, or if it's just not really part of the, of the evaluation.
Yeah, I, I like the way E is described too, so two votes for E, one for B, four for A.
The only thing I would say is I, I don't see that reflected in her goals, I don't know how tightly we have to stick to that understanding of, you know, having it, the focus indicators match to her goals, but if we do, which I, it says aligned to the superintendent goals, I don't I, I don't know, unless someone has a different way of looking at it that does make that match some of the goals, I don't really see anything necessarily about budget unless we're talking about buying, I mean, we do talk about buying a, a new literacy program.
Mayor?
Member McLaughlin?
I also am a vote for environment and I was torn between B and E when we were looking at it, I do it's in, interesting as we're going through this and good fodder as we're thinking about September, which is unfortunately right around the corner. And, you know, thinking about how the goals can align with some of the things that we're talking about now, particularly around B, in my opinion. But, and certainly obviously, you know, around E too, but I do think if I had to choose between the three, I would say A would be my top choice and B would be my second with, with a mind towards understanding that if we're getting too heavy in the eight or so that we're requiring, that I, I would be okay with dropping off B and considering it for September.
Mayor? Yes. I think the other thing, I'm a proponent for just the one in this category, mostly because when we get to the next category, which is really, really aligned with what the superintendent's goals are, I thought they all applied, so if we're trying to stick to six or eight, like going with one here might make some more sense, because that would give us a little bit more freedom to be focused on the communications, the family and community engagement component. So that was my, that was my other thought, is like, do we go sort of slim here and be focused on those other things? Okay, so it sounds like there's a, a motion on the floor for, a okay, there's a motion on the floor for A and if we need an eighth, then B, how does that sound?
Good. I'm, I would, motion for A. And I think we can wait for B frankly, so I would make a motion to take A for management and operations and then obviously if we get to the end and we feel that we can go back, we can make another motion, but I would just make a motion for environment under management and operations.
Second.
Yep.
Motion to include A, seconded by Member, by Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Hayes, roll call please.
Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Mustown?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Logocurn?
Yes, seven of the affirmatives, zero on the negative, A is included. Now we're on to family and community engagement, we have engagement, sharing responsibility, communication and family concerns. I'll open up to the floor or to Dr. Edward Vincent. Can I? Narrowing down, yes, Member Crats, I mean, Member Hayes?
Sure, I just, based on what Member Graham said just a few minutes ago, I felt the same way about this, I think our both long-term, we've been talking about family and community engagement and communication and now with things that have happened in the past couple of months, I think that's come into a sharper focus of, an area of of growth, so I agree with her, I felt, I mean, when I felt like I had to narrow it down, I went with B and C, but I could certainly see all four of those even being a focus.
Mayor?
Member McLaughlin?
I think that this is something that, you know, we have been working on and talking about for a long time, I think that these need to be a primary focus, I know that we have, what is it, two from the first, one from the second, so three, if we took four, would be at seven at this point, I do feel like D can be a little bit redundant if you read A, B and C, because I do think that E addresses family concerns, I think that the only difference that I see in D D addresses family concerns, I think that the only difference that I see in D might be equitable, I don't know if I see equity in the other, I don't see the word equitable in the other.
Equity is in all of the superintendent's goals, it's like the primary focus, so I think, I think we could go with A, B, and C.
All right, then I make a motion for A, B, and C under standard three, family and community engagement.
Motion by Member McLaughlin, seconded by?
Second.
Member Hayes, roll call, please.
Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Lango Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero and the negative, motion passes. And Member, yeah, Miss Stone, yes, seven, zero. Professional culture, commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, proficiency, communications, continuous learning, shared vision, management conflict, and then thank you for scrolling down.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, Member Graham?
If I had to prioritize like one of these, it would be, especially since we dropped family concerns out of the last category, I think for me, it would be F, managing conflict. Because I think that ties nicely with all the other communication goals, and like, the, the, you know, challenges with climate and culture that we have right now, and with the superintendent's, you know, overall district improvement goals. So for me, like, that one jumps out as perhaps the most pressing thing that hasn't already been covered elsewhere.
Mayor?
Member McLaughlin?
I would agree that F is a, is an important standard, and I would also advocate strongly for B. I think cultural proficiency is really important, and something that, you know, aligns with our vision of equity, and, and something that needs to be explicit.
Thank you, I would also just highlight A, commitment to high standards as well, so I think we have A, B, and F that have been, are being thrown around, so Member Crats, Member?
Yeah.
Russo, any comments on those?
Yes, I definitely think managing conflict, definite on that, and it's, it's tough with the A and the B, like, I, I think I would choose A over B. I, it's, it's, it's tough, because then we're gonna get into too many indicators, but they're both important, it's very, it's very tricky to narrow it down.
And I think the recommendation is somewhere around six to eight, so if we have nine, I think it's fine.
And what does the superintendent think so far of, of what we've so far approved?
I feel, you know, I, I feel significantly relieved knowing that we're identifying the specific indicators, which are fairly closely aligned to the goals, so that I think this is gonna make it more manageable, and I think, you said right now we're up to nine, I, I feel like that's probably a, a good amount, and that I will continue to gather and compile evidence in those areas, you know, to the best of my ability, but I think, you know, when you're looking at every single indicator, it's just too much, it's too much content to be able to cover everything and try to cover it well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I agree, it was hard to even, you know, mark all of these, there was so many. I think we have the most votes for A and F, is there a motion or any?
I would make a motion for A, B, and F.
A motion for A, B, and F. Is there a second?
Second.
And Member Crats, roll call? Member Russo, you want me to call the roll?
I got it, I'm sorry, I was just typing it all out, Member Graham?
Yes.
Okay. Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Miss Stone?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Lango Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero and the negative, it looks like we have our indicators, thank you, everybody, that was great teamwork.
Great.
We have artifacts, superintendent will present to the committee at the formative assessment, and then we also have, you know, who's gonna, are we gonna create a committee to gather the ratings and the notes? Or are we gonna have one person do it, so, those two topics left?
Mayor, can I stop sharing the screen, or do you want me to keep it?
I, I think it's good, thank you.
Okay, and then I would like, I would, I would think, you know, not that we need more committees, but I think it would be helpful to have a committee doing this, just to help ease the process, but that's my opinion.
Okay, so there's one vote for a committee of, I'm assuming, three people to help calculate the ratings and notes, by Member McLaughlin. Anybody else have a comment on that, if you think it should be one single person or committee, Member Hayes?
I, I agree with the committee idea, at least, I mean, maybe at least for this first year, as we're, since we're looking at some changes possibly to how we do it. Just to take it off of having one person feeling responsible for, it really is a pretty big task, that idea of kind of combining everyone's ideas into one, I think it really is a big, a big thing to do, and it's one of our most important roles as a school committee, so I would, I would agree with the idea of doing it in a smaller subcommittee.
Mayor? Member Graham? I think, I think the committee could work, provided that, like, at least in terms of, like, the ranking evaluation that somebody takes on like the, the compilation of that component of it, and that the focus of the committee is like weeding through everybody's comments and writing, like, a cohesive comment about like that compiles everybody's comments, because I think that's one thing we haven't totally done in the past, like, I think we've tried to present everybody's points of view, and I think that's important, but I think what we heard in our session is like, the goal is really to have a cohesive story that comes out of this evaluation that the superintendent can act on, so I guess, like, I, I can see how we, like, I, I could see a format in my head about the, the like, ranking part, right? So whether it's need or proficient or exemplary, whatever, whatever those categories are, to show like a distribution of how the individual committee members sort of landed on each of those indicators, and, but then, once you see that distribution, like, there could be, you know, one person who thinks one, two people who think two, and four people who think three, like, I think it would be ideal if then the committee, the, the subcommittee could look at that and say, the recommendation is three, for example, and the recommendation is like, of all of these comments, which are public record anyway, like, this is what we recommend the comment to be, so that the output of the committee is like, a recommendation about how to take the distribution of everybody's scores to like one, one measure, and then a cohesive narrative that becomes the, the review, that then comes to committee of the whole, we all get a chance to like review it, and then we can vote to pass it, so I'm wondering, like, if that makes sense, I just think somebody is gonna have to sit down and like, do the number mechanics, I'm happy to be that person, like, of here's what the distribution is, so that then the committee has something to act on, because I think if three people get in a room and try to create that together, it's, it's gonna be really tedious for everybody, or I'd rather the focus of the work be on like, making the review sound cohesive in the end.
Mayor?
Yeah, Member McLaughlin, Member Hayes?
I think Member Hayes had her hand up first.
Member Hayes and Member McLaughlin?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, so one of the things we did find in that retreat training was that the numbers are not necessarily what we're supposed to be using, and I don't know if that's exactly what you meant, Miss, Member Graham, when you were saying that, but, you know, in terms of finding that proficient or needs improvement, again, I forget exemplary, but that based on the training, it was using those words that each member should be reading, so just wanted, again, clarify for people that, we have been doing the numbers, I think, for years, I know we just did them that way last year, but that moving forward, we were going to use the, the category names or, instead of using the actual one, two, three, four numbers and averaging them.
I just didn't remember what the names were.
Yes.
I have, I have the notes from the session, so is there a motion on the floor to use the wording on SAS factory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary versus numbers?
Yes. Motion to use those words, yes.
Second. Motion by Member Crats, seconded by Member McLaughlin, roll call, please. Member Russo?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the motion is, motion to use words.
Versus numbers.
Yep.
We never use, we never use numbers, but I'm happy to do that.
So the words are exemplary, proficient?
Standard, sorry, Member Crats, but we don't get to decide the words, they're actually in the required.
Just to clarify.
You wanted to know what they were, I thought you wanted to know what they were as part of the motion.
I don't know, I, I know what the words are, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, I just was clarifying what the motion was, sorry, I was gonna read it out in full if you want me to.
No.
Oh, okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for a roll call, and then we'll move on to, I think it sounds like we have another motion after this for, to, to form a committee, so Members Russo, roll.
Sure, Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member Miss Stone?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Lango Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero and the negative, Member McLaughlin?
Mayor?
Member McLaughlin, yes.
Oh, no, did you want to speak, Member McLaughlin, I think you?
Oh, I did, but I wasn't called in that role a moment ago, so I was just saying, yes, um, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip you.
That's okay, no worries. I did want to say before the motion for the subcommittee, I actually also wanted to couldn't ask my colleagues about the consideration for being able to, I know that the subcommittee will make recommendations to the committee as a whole, and then we'll take the vote, but also that there is, while we can do wordsmithing on the, on the narrative piece for individuals to make a cohesive statement around that particular item that we're evaluating on, I would like to have folks consider and leave it up to the committee for discussion right now as to whether, I know that the statements are public anyway, but whether we want to have the statements available, if we feel like we need to look at them just to get a further understanding of the wordsmithing of the subcommittee. I don't know that folks want to, but they may want to, so just want to remind people that that might be a factor.
So meaning that after the committee does its work, it would hand over not just the recommendation, but the raw, like, original documents from each member as well?
Raw data, I think it's important, the raw data, yes, thank you, so I would make a motion that the material includes raw data, so that the evaluation includes the recommendation and the raw data at which the recommendation was arrived at.
Can you repeat that, please?
And make a motion that the evaluation include the raw data from all members, in addition to the summary evaluation of the subcommittee and recommendations of the subcommittee.
Motion by Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Graham, roll call vote on valuation including recommendations and raw data.
Uh, Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Miss Stone?
Yes.
Member Russo, yes, Mayor Lango Kern?
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero and the negative, I believe there's a motion on the floor for, to form a three-member subcommittee.
Mayor?
Yes, Member Russo?
If I could make that motion, so that I could follow rule thirty-one in our rules that we adopted last year, rule thirty-one says the special subcommittees, I'll summarize it. It's always super boast, but that we can establish special subcommittees by our vote. We have to include what those, that vote has to include what the membership is, the duties, as well as the duration that we think that this subcommittee will be formed for. So we can't create a special subcommittee that is just until you get it done, like we have for regular committees, so we would just, just from what I've heard, I mean, do we think?
Members, so is anybody interested in being on this subcommittee? Member McLaughlin? Member Hayes?
I'm happy to do it.
McLaughlin, Hayes, and Graham. There's no objections and no further, eyes, we have a committee, members, so there'll be a three-person committee, I think in my opinion, this, we should just, a committee should just be established until, until the school committee, whoever they may be at the time decides to do it in a different format.
Mayor?
Member Russo?
Oh, so you don't want to establish a special subcommittee then, you just want to establish another regular standing subcommittee? Those are the two choices we have.
It's up to the committee, I?
I don't care either way, actually, I think, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, yeah.
And then you can always make permanent if it works out.
Yeah, I, I agree, I just think that it's a complicated process, and having this special, or the subcommittee, I think would be necessary each year, unless it's determined it's not.
I would second.
You're seconding, Member McLaughlin, you're seconding the creation of a subcommittee?
Yes, if that's what Member Russo is making the motion for, I should have clarified.
Yes, Member Russo, seconded by Member McLaughlin to form a new subcommittee made up of three members to compile the ratings and notes for the superintendent's evaluation. Roll call, please.
I need one minute.
No problem.
Mayor, do you mind if we split the, who the members are into a separate subcommittee, into a separate motion?
Sure.
Okay, so then, I have the motion is to create a new standings, a new standing subcommittee with three members for compilation of notes and evaluations of individual members, a compilation of the notes and evaluations of individual members, and provide a recommendation to the full committee at evaluation time, did I miss anything?
We already did the one that includes raw data, right, so you don't have to include it, okay.
Yes, we did.
Okay, great, whoops, so let me do that, as Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Member McLaughlin?
Yes.
Member Miss Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Russo, uh, Member Russo, Mayor Lango Kern?
You want it, Paul? No, yes, seven affirmative, zero.
No. Okay, and so, the second motion that I'll take a roll for is, update the time, is that members?
Graham.
Graham, Hayes, and McLaughlin.
Second.
Graham, Hayes, and McLaughlin will be assigned to the, oh, we didn't name it. Should we just name it the evaluation subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
The evaluation subcommittee. We should pick a chair probably, or maybe they can do that themselves and let us know. I mean, it's not how we normally do sub.
I nominated Sharon Hayes as the chair.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, she's the one that called this meeting. We are just doing so good.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Member Hayes, if all are happy with Member Hayes being chair, thank you for stepping up, Member Hayes, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Sharon.
So, uh, member, I'm sorry, we ready, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Roll call? Thank you, so, Member Graham?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Crats?
Yes.
Yes.
Member McLaughlin.
Yes.
Member Miss Stone.
Yes.
Member Russo. Yes, sorry, I'm waiting for an answer. Um, Mayor Longo Kern.
Yes, seven of the affirmative, zero and the negative. We have a committee.
Mayor.
Member McLaughlin.
I just have to say that felt like the most efficient meeting we've been to. Thank you, Sharon, for calling that.
We're good at this. It only took a year, Member McLaughlin.
It only took a year, is that what you said?
Three of them.
Three years, right. Um, I would just ask the, if I could through the chair, if um, how, i- if uh. The superintendent is amenable with all of the um decisions that were made tonight, if that's feeling okay.
Yes, um, it it's good just to to have a clear plan and to know what the expectations are. So, um. I know we didn't get into the the specifics of the indicators, but now that I know the areas to focus on, I'll focus on providing evidence. For those key indicators. Um, and um, you know, try to get feedback along the way. Between now and the end of the school year to see if I'm moving in the right direction.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Edward Vincent. Thank you to the committee. Um, great job, everybody. Is there a motion? And Member McLaughlin, seconded by. Member Crats, roll call, please.
Member Graham.
Yes.
Member Hayes.
Yes.
Member Crats.
Yes.
Member McLaughlin.
Yes.
Remember Miss, uh, Member Russo. Yes, uh, Member Miss Stone, Member Russo, yes. Uh, Mayor Longo Kern.
Yes, seven of the affirmative, zero and the negative. Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody. Thank.